So it's not by occupancy, it's by. Right, but I don't know what that actually is. Right, but do we know what that is?
All right, is everyone ready to get started? We've got seven o'clock.
I'm good.
Okay, we will get started. All right, welcome everyone to Santaquin City Planning Commission meeting tonight. It is Tuesday, February twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five. We're getting started right at seven o'clock. All right, tonight, would anyone like to get us started with an invocation or an inspirational thought? Commissioners, please? Would you also state your name for us for the record?
There's a favorite poet, one of my favorites is Edward Gass, who has a small part of a poem I like. It goes like this, if you get to know a fellow, know whose joys and know whose cares, if you come to understand him and the burdens that he bears, if you know the fight he's making and the hardship that he's willing to put in, he is definitely a fabulous writer. I just love that. You know, we don't want to know what people are going through until we can walk in their sheet with it. And that's my opinion. Thank you.
Well said, thank you. All right, would anyone like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight? Please.
Please, ma'am.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Wait. Okay, thanks. All right. For those of you in attendance up on the screen, we have our agenda for tonight. I think we're going to rearrange some of these agenda items. We typically put all of the public hearings up front and normally we proceed in the order that is shown there, but excuse me, the Morgan subdivision is expected to be a pretty straightforward and quickly handled agenda item, so I think we're going to start there. And then we'll probably shuffle the rest around a little bit too. We'll, after the Morgan subdivision, we will handle the parking reduction request as shown in agenda item number one. And then I think we'll move on to agenda item number three and then circle back to agenda item number two at the end. Clear as mud? We'll see if I can remember that order, but unless there's any objections, I think that's how we'll do it. Anyone? Okay, let's do that. Before we get started, for those of you who are here tonight with us, we're glad to see here, we normally get started with a public forum and that is your opportunity to address the commission and share with us any thoughts that you have. However, I would like to point out that we do have three public hearings on the agenda tonight. So if you have thoughts related to those specific agenda items, please hang on to them and then we'd love to hear your comments when we're discussing those agenda items. But for anything else that you want to talk to us about, now's the time. So I will open the public forum tonight at seven oh three and I would invite any comments if anyone would like to address the commission tonight. Okay, fair enough. Then we will close the public forum also at, no, at seven oh four. And we will move on to agenda item number four, which is the Morgan subdivision.
Okay, for the Morgan subdivision?
It's located at two hundred north ninety-five east. It's located in the R eight zone and consists of three lots on a little less than an acre. Just as a reminder, in the R eight zone, they're required to have a minimum size of eight thousand square feet and a minimum lot width of eighty feet. All three of those lots fit that requirement. They were granted a deferral agreement by the city council and they have received a favorable recommendation from the Development Review Committee on February eleventh. So your job tonight is to determine whether the proposed subdivision complies with the Santaquin City code because you're the land use authority for preliminary subdivision applications. And then we have the applicant with us.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Morgan, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Not so far.
Okay, thank you. All right, commissioners, any thoughts or questions on this subdivision? It is pretty straightforward. We're looking mostly for lot size and frontage requirements and those aren't being met.
I didn't have any questions on it. It felt like a straightforward.
If I remember right, there was a, perhaps it was a red line with related relation to a property line adjustment. Is that correct? And did that get worked out?
For that, it doesn't need to be dealt with until the final review, but it's just then is an existing shed if he's either going to do a boundary line agreement. But if the boundary line agreement doesn't work out, then he's agreed to just take down the shed before that gets recorded.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, very good. All right, that's the only question I had. Commissioners, anything else we need to talk about on this agenda item? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I will make it. Mr. Chair? I came in commotion to conditionally approve the preliminary plans for the Morgan subdivision with the following conditions. Complete a boundary line agreement or remove the existing shed in the northwest corner of Lot One before the plan is recorded.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Romero. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Moak. Any further discussion on this agenda item? All right, let's vote. Commissioner Tolman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wait?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Moak?
Yes.
Okay, that is forwarded with a positive recommendation. Are we, no, we're not forwarding a recommendation, we're approving the preliminary plan. That preliminary plan is approved. All right, thank you. Okay. We will now move on to agenda item number one. This is a proposed code amendment with regard to a reduction in commercial recreation parking requirements. Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks.
Okay, for this code amendment, we have, Kaden and Zachary are planning to open a nine thousand square foot gym in the Santaquin Peaks Industrial Park. The site currently includes thirty-two parking spaces, which will be shared with another unit. During the concept review, it's been determined that they would require ninety-three parking stalls based off the current code in ten forty-eight four. That requires one parking space for every two patrons. They are requesting this to be changed to one parking space for every five patrons, which would result in a sixty percent reduction in the required number of parking spaces for the commercial recreation parking. Just to clarify, commercial recreation is defined as an establishment providing completely enclosed recreation activities. Accessory uses may include the preparation and serving of food and/or the sale of equipment related to the enclosed uses. This will include like bowling alleys, skating rinks, pools, tennis clubs, et cetera. As staff, we conducted some research for nearby cities. In Payson, they require one stall for every two hundred square feet for amusement centers, rec centers, reception centers, health clubs and spas. In Spanish Fork, it's one stall for every hundred square feet or one stall for every five seats, whichever is greater. For an instructional studio, it's one stall for every four hundred square feet. Springville is, health or amusement uses require one stall for every hundred and fifty square feet. And then Aquatica Recreation is one stall for every two hundred and fifty square feet. In Salem, dance, music and similar studios require one space every two hundred square feet of building size. And then in Linden, cultural amusement and recreation require one stall per three and a half people. And then we also have done a case study that I'm going to pull up right here. Actually, before I show you this case study, I'm going to show you a site plan of the proposed parking right now. So this is the industrial park. Half of this building would be used for the gym and then the other half would stay warehouse and office space. And then this is the proposed parking lot. The warehouse would require eight parking spots and then the proposed nine thousand square foot gym would require ninety-three spots. And then sorry, just a second.
You're good.
So sorry, everyone.
No worries.
Okay, we're just gonna. Okay, I have a PowerPoint, but we also have the PDF copy, so we're just going to use that. Okay, so back to, they currently have thirty-nine spots. The proposed gym would need ninety-three spots. With the current requirement of one stall per occup- or two stalls per occupant, it would be, they would need a hundred and one parking stalls. Their request is one stall per every five occupants, which would require forty-six. They would need an additional eight than what they have currently. I didn't click anything. We looked at five different gyms. One of the gyms was an anytime fitness in Springville. They have approximately twenty spots for the gym. It's a eight thousand square feet and then they share parking with like a Papa Murphy's, a Treehouse Learning Arts Center, a couple insurance offices. This is what the parking lot looks like around noon on Wednesday, the twelfth. This is early morning on the thirteenth. This was about six thirty on the eighteenth. It's definitely more crowded at this time. We also looked at a bending iron gym in Spanish Fork. It's located in an industrial zone that would be similar to Santaquin Peaks. They have approximately sixty spots that they share with other warehouses. This is what the parking lot looks like on Wednesday. This is early morning on Thursday. And early morning on Tuesday. We also looked at a one eighty fitness in Salem. They have approximately ninety spots. They share with a variety of different businesses such as Division of Child and Family Services and Orthodontics, RV Repair Salon, Martial Arts, et cetera. This is what it looks like around noon on Wednesday. This is around like seven thirty on Wednesday night. And then early morning on the thirteenth. And then we looked at another gym in Salem called the Fit Club. They have approximately eighteen spots. They're definitely the smallest gym at three thousand six hundred square feet and they don't share their parking lot with anyone else. So this is what it looks like around noon. This is around seven thirty on Wednesday. And then early morning on Thursday. As you can see, the Springville, Spanish Fork and Salem parking lots aren't quite as crowded. Just keep in mind that these cities do have a variety of gyms to choose from. And then we looked at a total fitness in Payson, which we believe would be a little bit more comparable to the one in Santaquin because there are fewer gym options in Payson. The total fitness is approximately twelve thousand square feet. They have thirty-five spots. And then Payson City has an overflow parking for Main Street. That's in the back. We didn't take any pictures of the overflow parking because we wanted to really focus on what parking looks like just for the gym spots, obviously with some of the gyms that, they have such shared uses that you can't do that. This is what it looks like midday on Wednesday. On Thursday, and then the eighteenth is actually when Payson City ripped up that parking lot. They're going to redo it. And so you can see a considerable more amount of traffic in the morning and midday on the eighteenth. And then just as a reminder. That they are requesting to change the commercial recreation parking from one stall for every two occupants to one stall for every five occupants. And this affects small gyms, large gyms. A variety of different uses. And then we have the applicant to answering questions. Do you guys have any questions for the research done?
Yeah, I have a quick question for the applicant, so.
Yeah, of course.
Hang on just a second. Would you state your name for us for the record?
My name is Kaden Hartsford.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, just to help me understand. What would be the reasoning for you to ask for less parking?
Yeah, totally. So basically, a lot of it is based off of the site map area to begin with. On top of what data has shown in other locations and other gyms around the, you know, around southern Utah County. So basically, if you look at that site map, it, it doesn't allow for ninety-three spaces, basically. Just based off of the orientation and everything, so we would need to be cutting into other commercial properties basically at that point, and it's just not physically, you know.
Yeah.
Amendable that, and you've got to consider the, especially in the gym space, the turnover rate. So for example, for every basically spot that we have, for every patron that we have coming into our facility, it's going to be roughly an hour that they're staying. That's on average. And that's kind of what these stats are. So you'll see at the bottom, all the stats. Those are kind of averages overall. Based off of that information as well. I mean, with this information you have in front of you, you'll see like in comparison and I, what I did is I actually went through with the businesses and kind of showed, okay, there's two separate businesses in this business park. This is per space for the business, if that makes sense. You know what I mean? And so just physical space and turnover rate doesn't seem to be conducive with a two to one rather than like a four or five to one. And originally, we actually wanted to limit it per square footage, so that way bigger facilities wouldn't be affected, would, wouldn't be affected by this rule. They would still have the two to one. But overall, I mean, that's just how it got proposed and that's how it got brought up here, so.
So now you're going to be sharing the parking with other businesses around you, right?
Yeah, so we're only going to be sharing with one other business. So, and that's going to be a fiber optic. Basically, he manufactures fiber optic cables. Cody Christiansen is his name. I'm sure you're familiar with him. And he has a massive yard off to the side, so.
Okay, so like in the event, I mean, this gym is the only thing in town. It's going to be popular for a while.
Yeah, and so.
Where's the overflow?
We're, we're actually trying to limit that too with our pricing structure and everything because we don't want it to be overflowing, right? That's our business model going into this. I can't guarantee this for any other gym coming in. But for our business model, we're wanting to have higher pricing, so that way it limits the amount of people that are coming in our facility. We've thought about also limiting memberships if that's an option. You know, if we need to get to that point, we will. But at the same time, with the ninety-two hundred square foot facility, it's really not that big in comparison. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because if you look at a typical Vasa, it's going to be about fifty thousand square feet, whereas we're margins above that. You know, margin's different. The other thing is too, is if you look at like other cities like Payson and Salem. They, if you look at their gyms, there's usually a cheaper option, which is like Target Fitness or one eighty fitness now. And then you look at like the Fit Club, which is a lot smaller, you know, location, but it also has a higher price tag. And so you look at that price tag in comparison, there's not nearly as many people going to that. You know what I mean?
Yeah, thank you.
That's our goal ultimately at the end of the day. Any other questions or any other?
I imagine we will have some questions you have, Jason.
So, and you brought up a good point. Practically speaking, yeah, they have a shared parking lot with the other use. It's not shared parking. This is not a shared parking request. Or, I mean, and that could be a tool that if, if they're not able to get the parking requirement and met, that that could be a tool to help them. I think the, the other use right now is shown to need six or eight.
It's eight parking.
Eight parking stalls, so that could be a tool. Another tool they could have is, is a parking reduction, which I know the planning commission has seen before, but the angle that they're kind of proposing tonight is to do a broad ordinance amendment for the parking requirement, which park, commercial recreation's not just gyms. It's kind of a broad brush of a lot of different types of commercial recreation type businesses. So that's always something that, that staff will remind you of is, is this is not just a, an ordinance amendment that's going to affect one gym or one side or even one type of use. It could affect other types of uses as well. But anyways, yeah, I know the, the term was thrown out and that, that's fine, but, but it's technically not a shared parking because
Okay.
because the warehouse or the, the other use will have eight designated stalls for that business. And then the other thirty-two remaining stalls would be for this, so just something to keep in mind.
Yeah.
Then I have one more question. You know, I'm done. So if the amendment is changed to the way the applicant wants, okay, that's definitely going to determine the type of businesses that come into this industrial park, right?
Yeah.
Limit the type of businesses that can come in.
I mean, not necessarily because this is going to affect any type of business that comes into the city. I mean, obviously, there's, there's some vacancies out there in the, in the industrial park, but, but yeah, I mean, this, this is, this is a very specific example and a proposal that they have, but their request is actually quite a broad request that is changing a code requirement that would apply to any, anybody else that fits into that commercial cat, commercial recreation definition.
That, and on top of it, that being said, especially for that industrial park alone, it'll open up the opportunities for more businesses to come in. That's our process number two.
With that, for you, Jason. Because it is a code amendment, is there a way to do it? Because I, like, I think it'll be fine for the gym. But what happens later down the road when we have a bowling alley or a fun center come in and it's just not going to work for that, can we do it like a conditional use instead of changing the code completely?
So for, for something like a parking requirement, I don't know as if I'd go as far as making a conditional use because a conditional use is really just a permitted use, but there's maybe some, some more impacts that you would try and mitigate. Parking is, a parking requirement is pretty clear cut. Like right now, ours is one per five patrons. That's a good question, and if you really wanted to get creative, you might either extract gym from the commercial recreation definition and create its own with its own parking requirement, if you wanted to go that far. Or, you know, you could look at, look at a couple of different things or, or, you know, you don't have to, to go with what they proposed tonight. You could find a happy medium that, that you think, you know. And the, the purpose for the, the planning commission in this legislative process is to provide a recommendation to the city council. So the city council will, will take your recommendation and consider it. But there's, like I say, there's, there's different approaches that you could take with this and, and one of them could be if you wanted to, you know, have gym as its own. Now, I will say that there's no silver bullet for, for parking requirements. As you can see, you know, all of our neighboring cities have quite different ones and it's, it's a difficult thing because we're not able to tailor parking requirements for a specific business or a specific site. You know, for fear of discriminating against one business versus another. The example that I use sometimes with people is, you know, you could have a burger shake joint. You know, we have a lot locally here and they're going to be very different than, than like an In-N-Out Burger. You know, but they're the same use. They save, serve the same type of food, but their impact is drastically different. So that's why it's so hard to pinpoint and have a, a, a good requirement that's going to apply to all of the same types of businesses. So that's the tricky thing for, for your consideration tonight is to try and figure it out. But like I say, there's, there's options if you want to get that granular with, with uses within that commercial recreation definition.
I have a question. How many handicap stalls will you have?
We're going to have two. That's just what they have planned right now. We can add more if needs be. And we are planning on having the gym fully accessible as well, so.
Okay, I got a bunch of questions.
Yeah, go for it. Shoot.
Top line on the paper that you sent out?
Yeah.
Hand it out. Parking used per hour, one point two five. And then we have members each hour, twelve.
Yeah.
We're using the buddy system to get in there or what's the difference in there? Why am I?
Well, so this one actually shares a parking lot with like a, I think it was an O'Reilly in the subway. And so what I did, like I said, I took basically the amount of parking spots and divided it equally among the businesses, right? So this is the dedicated number of stalls for, for them specifically. You know what I mean? Obviously, it's shared parking, so it's mixed use. You know, you might have more, you might have less. So that was my thinking of having that in there. And then the number of members per hour, that is what I got from them, actually calling them and saying, hey, how many, you know, how many members do you have coming in and out an hour? Obviously, these range from like very different square footage gyms and very different gyms to begin with. Some of them are going to be CrossFit gyms, very few. We, I think we only have two of those. The, the majority of them are going to be what we're hoping to be, which is semi-private. And so.
So, but you can see my confusion there where we've got twelve, twelve members per hour, but only one point two five parking spots per hour.
Exactly. And so again, like I said, they technically only have like four dedicated parking spots. And so that's why you see, okay, you have twelve members an hour coming in based off of what they told me. When in all reality, the parking spots won't match because like I said, they have, I think it was for the whole facility divided by three businesses, you have about, I think they had twelve parking spaces for the whole thing.
So the requested code reduction would put it down to thirty-eight required for your gym?
Yes, that is correct.
There's thirty-two on site?
Yes.
Where's the six coming from?
So we were actually going to add some more in the back and along the side. If you look at the site plan, there's plenty of room in the back and around the corner. We can add more than thirty-eight if at all needed. But just for this, kind of what we were thinking is just the thirty-eight because it makes it easier for everyone else involved. You know what I mean?
Have you, if you put parking in the back and on the side like you were talking about, what's the total amount that you could fit in there?
That I don't know. So we would have to measure that all out and everything. I would have guesstimating around forty to forty-five spaces. That's what we were thinking.
Is that in the asphalt area at the bottom?
Yeah, so the other things too, we can add along the back of the business itself, but where there's two loading bays. But ultimately, we're hoping to avoid that to have more of like an outdoor recreational area where they can go out and workout outside. And then a lot of the time with these facilities, you have to look at turnover rate. That's the biggest thing. You know what I mean? On average, like I said, it's around an hour that you're staying at the gym. You know, some, you get those, some fitness buffs that stay two hours, you know what I mean? And some that only stay like thirty, forty-five minutes, so. And then that's the same to go with like bowling or any of these other ones that you might consider as well, so.
So if you max it out at forty-five spaces, you subtract the eight spaces for the other part, that gives you thirty-seven and you still need.
And like I said.
Minus two for the handicap.
Yeah.
That gives you thirty-five. And with the code reduction, you need thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. And like I said, so we were going to do parallel parking along that edge as well. So if you look at it. So along this edge, along where that road cuts in, we can do parallel parking right there along the back. And then this actually doesn't slow the whole cycle in, but it kicks out to the back there and that's. And then this actually doesn't slow the whole cyclone, but it kicks out to the back there, and that's where we can add a lot more parking.
Would you be allowed parallel parking if you only have a twenty six foot access easement, cause you need twenty six feet for fire?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Access.
That I haven't measured out yet, to be honest with you, but we can look into it if needs be, I mean, like I said, we have plenty of room in the back to be able to add. More than enough spaces if needs be to be able to make it work with the code change.
Oh, yeah.
So have you estimated what your um maximum usage per hour would be?
No, not yet, because we don't have any statistics to go off of, that's why you see all the two B determines at the bottom, that's us basically.
So you've, you've run the numbers. You know what your customer base has to be at.
Yeah.
In order for you to stay there in that position and be profitable.
Yep, and on top of the.
How many memberships do you have to have there to, to break even?
To break even.
To be in that area.
Gonna be around eight hundred ish.
But memberships don't necessarily mean people coming in, because that's also part of the gym.
Percentage of those memberships that come in on a regular basis, that's where I'm, I'm getting.
Well, and that's, that's the thing is, with, with our gym, what we're wanting to do, being a semi-private gym. We're wanting customers to come in a lot more often, you know what I mean? We're not wanting to be one of these bigger fitness facilities where you pay fifteen dollars a month and we're banking on you not coming in, you know what I mean?
So you're planning on your people coming, like you.
Yes, we want people to come into the gym, we want people, and that's the whole point, is to actually benefit Santa Quinn as a community. Rather than just, you know, make it so that way people are not benefiting and not getting in the shape that they need, you know what I mean? So that was our goal going into it, our occupancy rate is a hundred and eighty six at the moment, and then that's with the addition. The, so we're sitting at like ninety two hundred square feet. And so, like I said, that's why we were hoping to do a reduction, cause based off of the lot size. Um, we basically need to fill out his side and then some with ninety three spaces. And it's just not feasible for everyone involved, you know what I mean?
And your hours are gonna be?
Uh, our hours are gonna be twenty four seven, um, but like I said, peak hours are gonna be in the morning from anywhere from four thirty to nine. And then from five to about seven or eight o'clock at night, those are gonna be peak hours when it's busiest. And then in the day, in the middle of the day, we might hold classes, and we're gonna limit classes to fifteen people per class. Obviously, there's gonna be some more people possibly using the gym in there, that timeframe, so I mean, imagine about. Fifteen to maybe twenty, twenty five people in the midday.
So if you get eight hundred memberships sold right off the bat and you average.
And like I said.
That's two hundred and forty people a day.
Mm-hmm, the thing we're having to consider too is, like I said, the price point that we're gonna be at, so. Our base membership is gonna be sixty dollars plus a hundred dollar annual membership, right? So that's significantly higher than, like, that's double total um anytime fitness in Payson and total fitness in Payson, right?
And if nobody buys into that, then you're gonna reduce price to increase membership, right?
Yeah, but then.
Is that like for a single person or is that like a family membership? That's just a single.
That's just a single membership, yeah, and then we're gonna have a higher one that's gonna be an eighty dollar membership. And then same thing, it's gonna have a hundred dollars, so that's the thing, is we're really trying to limit the amount of traffic in and out, cause we don't want it to be overcrowded. We really don't, you know, cause a lot of the time in those semi-private facilities, the guys that go to it. Don't like to be stuck with, you know, somebody right behind them, you know what I mean? And it's hard, because this is the only gym in Santa Quinn, and so again, we don't have any statistics or any numbers based off of that. Right, so we don't know the turnover rate, um, and again, we don't have any other ones to compare it to. So it's, that's kinda what we're going off of, is based off of other gyms and other facilities that we are comparable to.
So here's my thoughts on it.
Yeah.
I have a really hard time approving a citywide code amendment to facilitate one. One specific space, right? And you understand the reasons?
Yeah, I totally understand, well, and.
I could, I could see a slight reduction to get you in the, to, to make that right, but you're asking for a, a, a two thirds reduction, which is huge. For city and the, and the possible potential impacts on the other locations that we could have commercial recreation.
Yep, and so if you look at my original proposal, I proposed based off of square footage, right? So originally, if you look at the proposal, it was around a fifteen thousand square foot building.
But our code isn't currently written on square footage.
E- exactly, and that's what I'm saying, is if we can limit like a five to one based off of fifteen thousand square foot facility. You know what I mean, or lower, right? Cause that way, you look at the turnover rate, you look at the amount of people coming and going. That's fairly doable, right, whereas a fifty thousand square foot gym like a Vasa, like imagine a Macy's as a gym, right? That's what we're looking at, whereas you're gonna need that many parking, a two to one ratio in a situation like that. And that's why originally, we were again wanting to do the fifteen thousand square foot for the five to one ratio, but. Again, that didn't get put in, it just.
Yeah, but that's not. You're recommending either, right? You're, you're recommending we go to a one to five.
Yeah, so, but that's what I was ori- originally recommending, they just did the five to one without reading that I had fifteen thousand square feet in there.
Okay.
You know what I mean, so that kind, that fifteen thousand square feet kinda got lost in. Where, wherever, but like I said, if you look at my original proposal, you'll see that it has fifteen thousand square feet in there.
Yeah, I, I still stand with that, I have a hard time making that big of a reduction just for one business. Um, I, I would be open to a very slight reduction, but nowhere near two thirds of the required, current required parking. Um, maybe this isn't the best um location for this business, you know what I mean? You wanna look for a location that has more shared parking.
And that's the hard part, is there's really not commercial development going on around here in Santa Quinn, so.
I agree, but. Future businesses that are gonna meet code, is, you have to consider that too as well, so if you spill out of this parking lot, where does the parking go?
Yeah, I, and that's the thing, is I totally understand that, especially.
Summer Ridge Parkway, then we get, start getting complaints for people parking on the roads.
Uh, which we don't want, and that's, again, that's really why we're trying to limit the amount of memberships we're gonna have. Again, I understand that's per business, right, like, you're not gonna make it just for me.
Right.
You know what I mean?
That's what we have to consider, just so you understand, as a planning commission, we have to consider the citywide effects, I, I would like nothing more than to help you out, make this work. But we have to consider the potential impact for the entire city.
Well, and again, if you look at the broader term of it, like I said, you look at the bowling alley, for example. Let's do the numbers on it, if you do the numbers on it, you open a, you know, let's say it's five thousand square feet, you know what I mean? The turnover rate is gonna be roughly an hour, maybe two hours at the most, right, that the people are coming in, and they're coming in and big families, so like a. You know, five people per vehicle coming in, right? And so if you look at a situation like that, the five to one isn't really that big of a deal, you know what I mean? And if, I mean, even a four to one might be doable, you know what I mean, for the parking requirements? But like I said, if you look at any other city and any other, um, like municipal code that they have. It's really in stark difference in comparison to what we have, you know what I mean? Like, a two to one is, is kind of, like I said, a ridiculous notion from what we have currently.
Let's pause there for a minute while we chew on this, cause be, we do need to have a public hearing tonight, since this is a proposed code amendment, so maybe we can. Think about that a little bit and gather our thoughts while we do the public hearing, and then we'll probably have you back up for some discussion.
Yeah.
So, um, let's go ahead and uh open that public hearing tonight at seven thirty nine. And I would invite anyone here who would like to comment on this agenda item to step up and comment. Yes, please step up to the podium and state your name for the record for us.
Uh, my name's Zachary Barker, I'm, yes, I'm the uglier half of Kaden. Um, but ba- basically, I guess the main point is if you look at other cities which are much larger and have significantly more businesses than Santa Quinn. Other gyms are able to operate with significantly smaller parking spaces, even when they have a much different business model than what we have. Most of the gyms in the other cities that were brought up run off of the big box model, bring in as many customers as you can, sign up as many people as you can. Um, but what Kaden was saying is a semi-private gym, right, higher price point, restrictive men, restrict your memberships. So if you look at Vasa, statistically, half of their members don't even go to the gym, so they're paying for things they don't use. Um, and just to sort of piggyback off of what I was saying, much larger cities with significantly more businesses. Operate with gyms having significantly less parking spaces, so it can be done, if we're not asking for something crazy. We're asking to improve the community here and bring a gym and business into the community, into the community to improve people's lives, so. That's kind of the point, eh, bigger cities can do it, there's no reason Santa Quinn can't do it.
Thanks.
Um, Brian D'Orsario, um, I, I did wanna point out, I, I've been, uh. I mean, I'm obviously interested in getting a gym here in Santa Quinn. Um, and, uh, while I was hearing the questions, I just did wanna point out. We, we do have something that is comparable, which is the city off, the city hall, uh, that offers group fitness. Um, and obviously, this is anecdotal, but I just wanted to share it in this meeting. Uh, i- it's quite common when, when it comes to group fitness, which I believe is. Uh, what's going to be offered at this gym and, and, and many gyms, um, that's kind of the trend where I see things going. Is, um, there's a lot of carpooling. Um, anecdotally, I've seen about three people per one car that come for city group fitness. Which I, that's really the only uh comparable that I know of right now, um. Uh, but just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Okay, who else would like to comment tonight? All right, while you're thinking about it, we did have an email that came in from a member of the public, um, who wanted to share some thoughts, this came from, um, Brad Gunnel. Um, he sent it to me and to at least one other commissioner, maybe multiple commissioners, so. It, I'm not gonna read it word for word, but I'll try to summarize what he said, and then I'll ask for corrections or comments on, on what he said. Um, his points were, um. Basically, um, that he didn't feel like the comparison with the gym in Payson. Um, that was chosen as the most comparable option was perhaps an accurate comparison because of the parking issue. Now, we've talked about that during the staff presentation, and so I think that point has been covered, um, but he thought maybe some of the other, other options would have been a better comparison. Um, and then the other point that stood out to me from that email was just that he said he was in favor of this. Um, code amendment, and he would like to see uh something like this put in place for um this type of use. So, uh, other commissioners who received that email, is there anything you would add to that?
No, I did you summarize it well.
Okay. All right. While we're in the public hearing, would anyone else like to comment on this agenda item? Okay, then we will go ahead and close the public hearing at seven forty three. All right, commissioners, um, let's discuss. Um, I would echo Drew's comments, I think, I'm not sure this type of code change would be appropriate. Citywide for the broader commercial recreation category, um, for all the reasons we've discussed. That said, I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to, um, making some sort of adjustment, I can see how. A use like this wouldn't necessarily fit with the commercial recreation category as it's described in the code. I think this would be a much lighter usage model, um, and I kinda liked the idea that, um, Jason mentioned upfront. Uh, when we were talking before the public hearing about, maybe it makes sense to create a separate subcategory for a use like this. It would have its own parking, um, regulations attached to it, or something like that.
I agree.
Yeah.
I think, I, I think we need a gym here, I think someone's coming in, they wanna put a gym in, why do we not want that? Like, there's lots of people here that want a rec center because they wanna workout, why would we not try to find a way to get it here? But without doing like a blanket cover of this is for every business in this category, can we make a category? Not just for gyms, but maybe for things that are gonna be about how many people are gonna be coming in.
Right.
Jason, like you said, like. Do a de- a definition for.
Like I say, I think there's some creative options, uh, we already have existing tools with a shared parking, which I don't know if will help that. Much in this situation, cause what they're sharing with only has eight parking stalls. Uh, and that doesn't cut into the current requirement of needing ninety three or whatever it is that they need, but, uh. But a, a parking reduction is another tool that, that they could look at, or as part of this legislative process, if, if, you know. And again, the planning commission's role here is to provide a recommendation, but if, if, uh, uh, you know, through the discussion with the planning commission, and if city council. Agrees, that could be a, a route that staff could go down and, and creating a, a new definition for gyms, that's maybe more specific rather than in a broad brush. Um, through the term commu- commercial recreation, so, yeah, this is obviously a legislative action and, and this is your recommendation, so.
I mean, but that's what I would prefer, because I don't, I don't wanna just say, no, we're not doing that. Just cause I think we'd need a gym here. It's, it comes up multiple times, I personally looked into having a bill, a gym built here, cause we needed it so bad. Um, but I think, I think that's what we should do here, but that's my opinion.
Can I interject a question maybe, I, I was just curious how the, um, the, uh, hundred and eighty six people. Capacity, I guess, was determined, where, where does that number come from?
I think that was probably coordinated with building, uh, when it comes to. Occupancy of a, a building and based on the square footage and the uses inside the building, I think, I think our building official probably helped with that.
Okay. To address one thing that come up, Commissioner Wood, as I said, the other cities, um, examples made it work. The one thing I noticed in all the other examples, there was a, a, a shared parking arrangement in most of those other uses. Where this doesn't have that capability for that much shared parking. Yeah, that's a fair point, so, something to consider.
And I don't think staff went that deep dive into whether there was a shared parking agreement that, that was worked out with the cities, I think it was just like I say.
They all have big parking lots with multiple businesses.
Exactly.
The parking could spill other places.
Exactly, shared parking lot, right, alright, so, obviously. Whether, whether there's technically a shared parking agreement or not, the, the principle of shared parking definitely helps.
It's just like the grocery store, right?
Right.
It all spills into the big parking lot.
Exactly.
Where here, we don't have a big parking lot, we're spilling.
Right, and it's only with other, one other use, so.
Patrons, do we define patrons as patrons per hour or patrons per day? Do we have a definition?
You talking about our parking requirement?
Yeah.
It's just a one to five, uh, let's see, one to two, I'll look up the exact code.
I think it's just occupancy, right?
Right.
Occupancy wouldn't be per day, it would just be.
It's based on the.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's based off the occupancy limits, what's our occupancy limit for nine thousand square feet?
Apparently, it's a hundred and eighty six.
Yeah, based on design capacity of the facility.
Yeah, well, everybody wants to, it's just a matter of what the impact's gonna be on the businesses and the road, right? So we've talked a little bit about perhaps creating a subcategory for smaller recreational uses. Um, the tricky part is, I have no idea what to pick for a number, as far as a parking requirement for those types of uses. Does anyone smarter than me have any ideas? Or is this something that we should take a little bit more time to think about and maybe do some more research on? Well, it looks like most of the other cities' parking requirements are based on building square footage instead of occupancy.
Yeah.
From, from what I could see in the examples that were provided by staff.
I have another question, uh, maybe to the staff, okay? We wanna encourage, uh, businesses to come, uh, to Santa Quinn, can't make it so hard, you know, being so rigid under rules. You know, this is a good business, you know, we need a gym here. And that goes back to the question, and, and I know that we talked it down about a conditional use for. Just that business, I mean, that, you know, either that or, uh, like you, we've said, a specific definition. For gyms only, and that won't include changing the, uh, the code for that. You know, we, cause you know, we, we, we don't wanna narrow what's coming in to the city.
But remember, the conditions have to be defined for a conditional use, we can't just make up conditions.
Yeah, but I, I mean, he, he's requesting only so many parking spots. You know, it is, couldn't that be part of the conditional use for just that business, you know?
Well, that's, so that's something you need to be very careful with, so conditional uses is not. Like a blanket exception type of a tool. Like a blanket exception type of a tool. Conditional uses address mitigating impacts. And so you, you need to be very careful that I would not recommend going that route because if you did a conditional use for them. But then maybe, you know, you guys like the fall time, you're in a better mood in the fall time. You grant a conditional use for a similar use. That's a lot more lenient or something like that. You've, you therefore discriminated. Uh, one business versus another. So, yeah, like Drew said, you need to have conditions. Uh, and, and really our conditional uses, they need to have the, the, uh. The requirements and the provisions kind of laid out, the conditions that need to be done. So that's why I say. Conditional uses are really almost like permitted uses. They just have some extra provisions usually that. Because of, of the impacts that might come from that, that use, so.
And then maybe then perhaps we should look at a, a specific definition for these kinds of businesses.
That may, that would be a better route to go.
Be like a subcategory under our, you know, uh, code now.
Yeah. Code amendment for all the.
Main thing is, you know, we, we don't want to discourage businesses because they're making it too hard to come in, you know?
And that's where I, I think some creative solutions can come into play here. To change the blanket, you know, broad brush, commercial recreation. Maybe it's, it's a more specific definition for. For gyms, uh, then you look at that or, yeah, but. Yeah, like I say, parking regulations are particularly hard because you could have two of the exact same types of uses. And the impacts are drastically different. So it's, it's, it's a tough thing.
But you know, it's something that can't be decided like here today, but you know, it's going to require some study. Get experts in the.
Right.
In the city to try to determine what, what would be the best definition. To make sure this business stays here and, and, and Santaquin.
And, and in my experience, you're never going to find the perfect number silver bullet because every situation is different. And that's what makes this so, so difficult to. To try and come up with requirements, but, uh, I don't know if it's necess- necessarily that we're going to find smarter people. It's kind of a. It's kind of your, you know, your best guess and, and trying to define that right balance, but, uh. I think, you know, a possible recommendation might be to the council to, to reject their proposal. Of one to five ratio, but to look into it further with, with an option of potentially. Creating a, a new definition for gyms and then find the appropriate, uh, ratio. I don't know as if it's one to five, maybe it is one to five if you, if you extract gym from commercial recreation, but. Uh, I think, I certainly think it's something that would probably will take a little bit of time. Um, and that we're not going to decide here in the next thirty minutes.
But you know, we have already case studies that kind of will help lead us to.
Right.
You know, a workable solution.
And best, best practices is probably where you'd start and, and you know, seeing what other cities require, but. Like I say, you're not going to find a silver bullet of, of the right number. It's just going to be, you know, whatever. Santaquin city is, is comfortable with and what, what they think is going to be the most appropriate balance because. You know, the, the, the opposite end of this is we want to support businesses, but we also want to make sure there's adequate parking. So it's not impactful to, to neighboring properties, for sure.
Do we know what the definition for gym is at other, these other cities that we looked at?
That would be part of the, the, the work that staff would do to, to find the best definition for a gym and then, you know. And, and we would, we would do something similar to what staff has done here and, and looking at other, other things and trying to just, you know. Come up with a number and that, that, that makes sense and would maybe be a right fit for Santaquin, so.
But you have to remember in the future, if a Vasa decides to come, there are gym.
Right, right.
Going to have the same regulation for them as you do for the.
Right.
Right.
Unless you create a, a category based on size, right? But then where do you draw that line?
Large gym, small gym. I mean, you could go pretty far with this.
Places in the code where we do that kind of thing, right?
Right. But I think that's, that's a tool that you guys, that I should say the city has to, to kind of help. Uh, with a situation like this, so something to think about.
There was one other tool you mentioned and I don't know, maybe I'm putting you on the spot, but can you review for us how parking reductions work?
Yeah, so a parking reduction and maybe to jog your memory, I know all of you weren't here, but like for instance. Uh, I think with Macy's, there was a parking reduction that was done.
Yep.
Uh, and that was kind of similar to this. There was, there was, uh. Uh, some research done to kind of justify and, and look at, at how that would work, but in our code. And I'm right there, I just need to. So, uh, it reads. Businesses or mixed-use developments seeking a reduction in parking must receive special exception approval by the planning commission. Such exceptions shall be based on the following review considerations and conditions. Uh, one considerations for reduction. Large floor area, the proposed business may have an exceptionally large floor area per volume of sales and customers. Furniture store, car wash, et cetera. Uh, that was something I think was really applicable to the grocery stores. Is, I think parking requirements get skewed when you have really large floor areas. If it's a smaller floor area, it's, it's different. But once you get so big, uh, then, then that parking gets skewed like, think of, think of like a, a mall, you know? Most of that parking is empty most of the time, uh, and a part of it's just because of the large scale of, of, of a mall. Um, and then within that, so that was item A, large floor area, item B, shared parking. Where compatible occupancies within mixed-use buildings and development projects shall, um, sorry. Projects allow sharing of parking stalls in previous parking areas and heat island effects can be reduced. Different occupancies often have parking demands that differ with the time of day or week. This allows sharing of parking spaces between occupancies and reducing the site. Area dedicated to car storage. In addition to the above review items, where a shared arrangement is proposed, the following shall. Also be provided for a review and approval, and then there's four criteria there. Uh, conditions for parking reduction, uh, compliance, all parking stalls and drive aisles shall comply with the standards established by this section. Reduction not applicable to ADA. Uh, ADA is really something that's more a calculation just of, of the ADA requirement, so. Uh, in no case shall any such reduction be applicable to any requirements of the Americans with disabilities act. The calculation, the required number of handicap parking stalls shall be computed from the, uh, pre-reduction total. And then impacts on adjacent properties. Um, so those are kind of the things that you'd look at as in a parking reduction. You know, shared parking is kind of part of that. The process for considering shared pro- parking, I think is. Is a little bit different. There's usually a shared parking agreement with neighboring businesses that allows them to, to share that parking, so. Yeah, like I say, I think Macy's might have been one of the only times there was a parking reduction. It seems like maybe there was a couple other.
I think that's correct. We did it twice for Macy's and both of them were like one percent. They weren't sixty percent.
Right, 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 right.
They were very small reductions.
And again, I think scale really comes into play when it comes to the parking requirement is, is it really gets skewed, the, the larger. Square footage you, you, you are looking at.
Um, I have a question for the applicants, just real quick. Um, how many employees do you plan on having there? At a time?
Probably around five at the max. Um, we're probably going to have two daycare workers on staff constantly, um, throughout the daycare hours. And then we're going to have one receptionist and then one to two personal trainers.
Okay.
Thanks. Yeah, that was a good question. Okay, so we all kind of, um. Coming to a consensus on which way we'd like to go on this. Which I think is that we maybe ought to consider creating a smaller, a category for smaller recreational uses and.
Negative recommendation to the city council with the recommendation to look into, uh, another option.
I think so, yeah. How's everyone feel about that?
Yeah, I think so.
I think that's fair.
Okay, I think that's where we're headed.
Okay.
All right, let's do it.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, uh, we've got thirty-two parking spaces. Eight of those would be conceded to the other company that's going to be there. Two of those would be conceded to. Handicap parking spots. Five of those would probably be taken up by the employees that are there. If we. Do the math on that, that leaves you seventeen. If you did a one to five ratio, that means you could have eighty-five patrons. Is that correct?
Yeah, with the required parking stalls?
Right.
You'd have, yeah. Not necessarily patrons, but vehicles.
Yeah. Well, per day.
Yeah.
Is that the way it would break out?
No, at, any one time in the business.
Let me just state that it's, I think it's thirty-five spaces, um, for, because I think total there's, I think. I think there's thirty-eight total, so we would have thirty-two spaces or something like that, somewhere around there, so.
Okay, I'm just thinking. I'm, I'm trying to figure out how the.
Yeah.
Square peg fits in the round hole.
Yeah, I, I get you. And that's the, that's the hardest part is we don't have any statistics to go off the base off of that, you know what I mean?
Okay.
It's, that's just the way nature of the beast, you know, so.
You know, we're looking at it from, we have so many patrons, this is how many parking spots you need. Well, let's flip that around. You only have so many parking spots. So how many does that dictate that you would have patrons?
Yeah.
And would that be something to consider in the proposal?
And originally, that's why we're trying to limit it per square footage, you know? Rather than just do the whole as a five to one originally, because in all reality, a smaller facility is going to need smaller spaces.
Yeah, it's always a tricky thing for a city to get into the details of a business operation. Really, I think cities, we want them to be as sex- successful as possible. Uh, but getting in and, and trying to, to kind of govern how they run their business is probably something we want to be careful of. I think the. The, the more physical aspects of the site, uh, impacts and stuff like that that are created from the site. But in terms of like the number of memberships that they would have or number of patrons they have, I don't know as if that's, that's something that, that is. The, you know, the way that the city wants to, to look at this.
And realistically, we have to work within the code or the, their proposed code amendment, right? We're not looking at anything else, so. If they want to propose, propose a different option, that's, we're totally open to that in my opinion. Would, would, in fact, I would encourage that.
Well, and like I said, that's why originally we were going up based off the square footage, which I was planning on being in the proposal. But that never got added for some reason, so it's just kind of.
Well, thi- this is your proposal.
Oh, okay, well then if that's the case, I.
We, we are not telling you what your proposal is.
Well, again, yeah, like I said, if you look at it and if you read basically what I had laid out. You'll look and you'll notice that I, like I said, said fifteen thousand square foot and below. Um, I only recommended that five to one for that ratio.
Yeah. For, for that. I think staff's done some research as well and given you a good, a good starting point for the square footage requirements of other cities, right?
And I appreciated that for sure.
So I would definitely do a little bit more research and take it to council, see what they say, but my recommendation would be to, to come back with a different proposal.
For sure.
And, and I think depending on how they vote, I think that's not anything that you would need to come back with. If, because you've, you've, you've submitted your request to, to have the ordinance looked at.
Okay.
I think if, if based on conversations with planning commission and then ultimately the city council, if, if that's how they want to kind of massage. Things to, to try and find a happy medium and, and.
Yeah.
Doing something like that, it'd probably be us that would, would kind of help make that work. And so I don't want you to feel like that. Well, sorry, this was, you need to come back and try again. I think, I think we're kind of in a, a process right now to, to try and make this work.
And that's the biggest thing for us is we really want to give back to the community. We want to be here and we're local, you know? We, we're both living in Santaquin currently. We both come from, you know. Yeah, and I totally understand that. And like I said, I mean, that's ultimately what we're trying to do. And so we just. You know, want to best be able to do that. So, I mean, again, we're willing to work with you guys on. You know, whatever we need to do to make it happen because we'd love to make it happen, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Of course, thanks.
All right. Is anyone ready to make a motion?
Commissioner Wood, I'll make a motion. To make a negative recommendation to the proposed code amendment, which reduces commercial recreation parking requirement to one parking stall per five patrons. And have city council and staff, if directed by city council, look into another option.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hoffman. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Wade. Any further discussion on that before we vote?
Did you want to detail out what that other option is?
I'll, I'll let city council and staff help with that.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know what the best option is.
We can convey the, the discussion that we had that maybe a, a subcategory is, is one of the options, but. Okay, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a specific option.
I personally like, not part of the motion, but I like the square footage requirement that the other cities have. That seems to be, work well.
Okay.
But I don't know if that's, that's required as part of the motion or not, so.
Well, I just know council and, and staff, this is your recommendation. Anything that you recommend, it would be great to have a part of that so that they know. What you're thinking.
That's right, three of, I think we do have three city council members here tonight, so. Okay.
So do we need to make that a part of the motion or not?
It's your motion, would you like to?
Not really.
Then we have a motion and we have a second. Let's vote. All right, Commissioner Moke.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Wood, yes. Commissioner, uh, Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Tolman. Okay, that motion carries and it's unanimous. And to restate, we, we are forwarding a negative recommendation on the proposed one to five parking reduction. But a alternative recommendation on finding a way to make this work with perhaps another way forward, perhaps a subcategory. I didn't alter your motion today.
Nope.
Okay. All right, that concludes agenda item number.
One.
One.
One, thank you. Now we're moving on to agenda item number three in the third spot.
Uh, it's for a performing arts studio located at a hundred and thirty-six North, two hundred East. They propose to operate two classes a day, Monday through Friday, from three forty-five to seven thirty P M. Each class will have twelve students for a total of twenty-four students per day. Um, as a reminder, the Santaquin city code for major home occupations are ten forty-six and ten forty-four. Um, they're required to get a major home occupation permit. Your job is to determine whether or not all requirements found in these codes are being followed and if a conditional use permit can be granted. Just for reference, this is where it's located. They have an accessory building in the back of their home that the classes are in. This is their application, just proposing the schedule of the different classes. There is a thirty-minute gap between both sessions per day. And then this is their traffic and. Plan, the arrows represent different locations for drop-off and pickup that are off the road. And then we have the applicants here.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, would you guys like to add anything to that, uh, presentation by staff? And would you state your names for us again for the record?
I'm Jeb Clark. This is my wife, Marley Clark.
All right, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add to that?
Uh, you know, we just, we've, we're dealing with parents right now, so we have, we're just really trying to iron through some. Of the parking. We've had some parents going rogue and we know that and we're trying to clear some of that up and. And we, we, we feel like we're kind of there. We just got to rein in a couple of our, our groups, but other than that, I mean, that's kind of. Kind of what we're doing, so.
Okay, so are you operating, um, at your home now and you're looking to increase?
So what we.
No.
So, um, our, our studio and we, running a, running a small business in Santaquin. Um, we actually, our studio was up by, by Stringham's and by Marco's Pizza up there. Um, we ran there for three years. And, um, so a little history on what we've done. Um, we ran that up there and then. We, um, hit a pickle this last year. They would not let us re-sign our lease because, um, another business that was part of her strip mall. Wanted to expand. And so, and then they actually didn't end up expanding, but, um, we found ourselves, um. In a, in a tricky situation, trying to figure out where to move our studio. And so, um, over the period of the last, um, eight months, we moved our family and bought a home. Um, with some land on it and a large, um, tennis court that we, um. Got the permits to build a building on, an accessory building, and we built it the correct size that you're allowed to build. And, and we did it that way and we did, um, you know, all the things were passed with our permits. Now our, um, our bill, our business permit, um, we had our business permit. Our business permit was with our, our old location. So as we've moved locations to this new location, we need to get everything worked out with this new location. And we do want to make sure that everything that we're doing is legally done in this location. Um, but that being said, had there been another commercial space to possibly lease in this town, we would have not uprooted our family and moved. Our studio. We would have just gone to another location in Santaquin, but we love this studio here in this town. This little town that doesn't have a lot of buildings. This little town that doesn't have a lot of buildings, but so, um, we've tried to be creative with that, but we wanna make sure that, like I said, that we're doing it. We're doing it legally and that we can work things out to make it work for the families that also live around us too. So, um, yes, that's where things are at right now.
Okay, great, thank you, that's helpful and thanks for sticking with the city.
No, so good, so good, we love you guys.
And for doing it legally, that's good.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We like to think of ourselves as community people.
Okay, um, all right, uh, as this is a major home occupation, uh, application, we do need to have a public hearing on this. So let's go ahead and uh take care of the public hearing now, um, I will open the public hearing at eight eleven. And invite any comments that uh anyone has on this application. Guys, I have a list, but uh, no, no, go ahead, you're here, please state your name for us for the record.
Yeah, my name's Caleb Stevens.
All right.
Um, I live, my wife and I, we live directly across from Melanie and Jeb and their dance studio. And we just had a few concerns that we wanted to bring to the meeting today, um. With the conditional use permit, first is the, the, um, vehicle stops limit of forty-eight, we've. And we haven't sat and counted, we did today just so we had something to bring to the meeting, but we've observed a greater amount than the forty-eight. Uh, especially on Thursdays, there's, that's kind of a busy day. Um, I I will note that Melanie and Jeb have done a good job, they came and talked to us, um, told us, you know, Thursday's gonna be a busier day and we're gonna. They've kind of managed with the parents dropping off and and as they mentioned, it's kinda hard to to rein that in sometimes. Um, but we have observed that it's it's greater than those forty-eight stops. The other thing is, um, in their, the plan that they submitted, um, they've got the traffic flowing from south to north, which. Would it be the passenger side, which is what the code requires, right, um, dropping off the passenger side, what we've observed is it's opposite now. Um, and and so they have the traffic coming from from north to south. And and there's sometimes children getting off into the road or, um, they park adjacent to us, which is across the road and so there's children crossing the road. And the whole reason I wanted to come today was, I don't wanna hurt their business, I don't, you know, I'm I'm excited for them, happy for them and and what they're doing and I. I wish them the best, but I also see a safety concern with these children crossing the road. Um, sometimes it's difficult for us to to back out, cause we, there there's those, uh, vehicles parked next to us and then an empty lot next to us, we can't see. Um, and 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 with the winter hours, it gets it gets dark li- earlier and so. Um, you know, it's six o'clock and there's a session ending and a session beginning and there's kinda kids running between, uh, vehicles and. And I just, I just didn't want something bad to happen, so I thought I would, I would, uh, I'd bring that to your attention. Um, so yeah, I think that's all, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Um, Mr. Adcock, would you like to come in?
I would, thank you. Art Adcock, I'm also a resident of Santaquin, I live on two hundred East, uh, just north of of this establishment. Um, I'm not opposed to businesses, um, we need them in town, I think this is a good, non-toxic. Um, clean air environment business. I share Caleb's, um, Mr. Stevens' concerns about traffic flow and and safety. They are operational business currently. Um, I think the code requires that they maintain all of their parking on their property. Not across the street like likes occurring currently, they have a driveway to the north of their property and to the south that goes back to the building. Um, it would be inconvenient for some of their customers, but I would suggest that they have their customers park in those driveways and. Do the vertical parking that they're currently doing up against their property line with the bumpers on the edge of the road. Keep everything on their property and don't don't infringe on the rights of of the property owners, um, that are in the area. And those are my concerns.
All right, thank you. Okay, uh, William Morgan. Is Mr. Morgan here? Okay.
Oh, yeah, that was for the Morgan subdivision.
There was various sheets out there and I think everybody just just.
I usually don't go off the sheets for this reason, but.
Right.
We, I'm gonna go down, I'm gonna go down anyway and and we'll give everyone a chance, Rachel Morgan, I assume is associated with Mr. Morgan? Okay.
Probably meant to sign the attendance roll and they signed.
It happens, there, we've got like four lists, so, um, all right, Melanie Clark.
She just, she just.
That's right, I got you guys right there, okay? Um, and I got Michael Merchant, would you like to comment? Okay, that's everyone on the list, would anyone else like to comment during the public hearing tonight? Okay, then we can close the public hearing at eight sixteen. All right, some good input. Can we maybe review what the uh requirements are for home occupation?
Yeah, and I think one, one good distinction here with this one, uh, as I reviewed this this afternoon, there is. Technically not really a parking requirement, uh, I think that's that's kind of a misconception with home occupation, so. Uh, the way the code reads, it says all business-related vehicles which park at the location of the home occupation must be legally parked. Either in conventional parking spaces on the lot or adjacent to the frontage of the lot, so this is very unique in that. You know, on-street parking is is considered okay for home occupations. Uh, no parking from the home occupation shall be permitted in front of adjacent lots unless approved by the city as part of a traffic circulation and safety plan. Required parking for resident vehicles shall be available at the close of business each day, so. Parking spilling out into neighbors' frontages, yeah, that's that's an issue and that may be something that can come up in in kind of a conditional use and. Going back to what we were talking about on the last agenda item, yeah, there might be something that we can do or or the planning commission can do to to mitigate. Impacts of that, maybe it's a, you know, require a flyer to go to parents or or, you know, some sort of of. Posting or something to 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 do that, because obviously, you know, I think was was stated, uh, very well is there's safety concerns with. With that, uh, as was mentioned, there is a requirement for, um, for the dropping off and picking off to happen on the. The passenger side of the vehicle for ob- obvious safety reasons. On that note, so that's parking, but I think a lot of what what this business will be doing is is not parking. But, uh, what the code refers to as, uh, vehicular traffic stops. Let's see, let me make sure I'm getting the right spot here. So, uh, let's see, what am I looking at? Oh, I was looking in mine, that's why, so, uh. There we go, so all vehicular stops for the dropping off or picking up of children shall be done with the passenger side of the vehicle toward the resident. A traffic circulation safety plan must be submitted, at least one adjacent residential street must be sufficient with to accommodate, uh. Uh, which I don't think is an issue there, um, so, yeah, I think it's it's important to differentiate parking. From vehicular stops that are just dropping and picking up up, I think on their application, what they were trying to demonstrate was. Was how many cars they think can fit on the frontage of their lot, uh, which which I think was shown that it could probably accommodate the. The C two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, so when they have a session, twelve, uh, is the maximum in one session, so they've. I think that's what they tried to demonstrate there, um, you know, maybe the the perpendicular dropping off is is maybe not the best. Maybe there's some sort of a circulation plan that they can work on where where, you know, like some schools do where. Where someone's out there and and they're guiding and helping kids to to get in and out and that sort of a thing, so. Um, from the staff perspective and as as was was shown in the 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 memo. Uh, what they've shown in their application meets all of the requirements in the code, uh, but. As was was talked about, there may be some impacts here that that can be looked at a little bit closer and try to be mitigated with maybe some some reasonable. Conditions that are directly related to the impacts they're causing, so hopefully that helps. Uh, there's obviously more in the code related to major home occupations and we can, we can go through any of that that you'd like to, but I think. From my perspective, I think that's the crux of the matter here is really the the traffic impacts that that come from that and and. And the the habits that the parents have gotten into of of dropping off and picking up.
Yeah, would you, I was gonna invite you up to, um, see if you had anything to say in response to that.
Um, first off, you know, to our our neighbors, we we really apologize, like, our our, I mean, I don't know if you guys. Just, parents just don't listen a lot, like, we've, 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 we've kinda felt like we did a pretty good drop off, even though we were doing it backwards. Um, cause we just felt like it would affect, there's a lot empty next to us, we felt like it would affect us less, but we have sent out emails. We have sent out emails to parents, like, don't park across the street, now, I will say that we have kinda given up. Not, I shouldn't say given up, that's not the word I'm gonna use, but it's been kind of exhausting a little bit, so. Um, but Melanie and I, we've, we've been just, you know, make, trying to make sure that we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, fix that. Situation like we, we don't want them to be bothering our neighbors.
And we can't, like he said, we can have them go the other direction, we were just trying to keep the traffic from backing up behind, so our. Our house is next to an empty lot and so we were like, well, if there's traffic going this direction and they're they're behind that empty lot. It just made, it just made more sense, but we can go, we can go the other way.
And and we, and we, we were, will put a a parking attendant out there just to kinda make sure it flows quicker and kids get in cars quicker and.
And to make sure that kids are safe.
Do it the right way.
Kids are safe, cause that five hun- five hundred percent, that makes me more than anything.
But I I would probably say that maybe the reasons that those things haven't happened, uh, uh, mostly because. We've just been slammed trying to, trying to.
Figure it all out.
Figure it all out and it's our first year doing it and so, uh, like we said, we're not, we we love our neighbors and we've talked to them, we've talked to all of them except for Mr. Adcock. And, uh, and so, but anyways, yeah, that that's really all I was, you know, coming up here for, so.
Yeah, very good.
But up for any, up for any changes that would help.
Do you guys have, like, you, they just drop them off or do they walk them into the buildings?
So, um, it depends on the day right now, where he said Thursdays, we actually do have a few teenagers that have been helping bring the kids in. We probably just need to have that system every single day, um, cause the other days, the parents, they park and then walk the child in and then come. Back out to their car, but it is quicker, more like a, the way you do like a preschool drop off, if you've seen where like preschools at homes. Where they just go and then, yeah, the teacher's there, they get them out, they go inside, it's it's quicker and more effective, for sure.
I mean, my little one was at a preschool, just like that, and that's kind of what came to my mind was. They have a system and that, like, they don't let you drop off the kid unless you're doing that system.
Yes.
Which, I know this is your first year, I'm sure you guys have figured it out.
By Marco's Pizza, which was the way we have worked it there, so, but doing it, doing it this way has been a little bit different, so we just wanna make sure. We can figure out the best way to make it work, so, for sure, for sure, and to work in the location that we're at.
Yeah.
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 So it's more just educating your customers than anything.
Yes, more than passing out those flyers to those moms, please, please do not, yeah, please do it this way.
Like emailing and texting.
Please head this direction.
And maybe even say, well, you cannot drop them off, we will not let you drop them off unless you're going this direction, cause that's legit how. Like my preschool was, the first time I made that mistake, I I learned.
Yeah.
Oh, I actually can't drop them off this way, and I learned every time after that.
And to come back.
Like letting them know, like, you can't, like, we will not let you drop them off unless you're coming this direction.
Yeah.
For safety concerns.
And now that the construction is done on the the main road, they'll be easier for them to turn at Aroma Cafe and just head that way.
Yes.
Yeah, that would be much easier than when it was.
Cool. All right, thank you.
So, if I may suggest, I think this is a maybe a good way to look at this, uh, per their application, they meet the code. Uh, obviously, there's been some some very valid concerns that have been brought up, uh, and I think it'd be appropriate, being a conditional use, that. If there's conditions that the the planning commission can come with to help mitigate that, I think that'd be appropriate, I think for the applicant, what's important. Is, uh, yeah, it's it's a hard thing, but if if, uh, those concerns continue to rise, then there. You know, the city has the ability to revoke the conditional use if if those safety concerns don't go away, so it's not just a, we wanted the parents to help out, but. They may be jeopardizing your business if they're, they're, if they're continuing to to create those those concerns and and impacts. Uh, on the neighborhood, on the neighbors, on on the safety concern, so I think that's kinda where we're at, it's, like I say, it's, they meet the code. Uh, but I think it's really almost more of a, if if they can, if they can show that they can run this business in in a way that meets conditions. If if any, uh, but also keep things safe and and appropriate for the neighborhood, then then there won't be any issues, but if if, uh. If, you know, if this is approved, meeting the code and and continue and, um. Uh, concerns continue to be there, then then this may be something that needs to be readdressed and and and, you know, consideration of revoking that conditional use, so. I think that's probably, uh, what would be my recommendation, staff's recommendation of how to look at this one.
Yeah, I agree, please step up to the podium for us.
I just also wanted to mention, my first point was that the code states that there's forty-eight vehicle stops, that's picking up. And dropping off, right, um, or vice versa, I guess, and today we we counted sixty, so there there's just more. I think there's more traffic in this business, which is great for their business, but I think it's more than what the permit they're trying to get. Um, allows.
And I can to- I totally agree with with the point that they have their application, they've indicated they will have twelve students per session. With a maximum of twenty-four students per day and if if there's things that that show that it's different than that and this will be. Kind of a co- code enforcement issue where we look at it and and if there's something that's showing different than what they've shown in their application, then that could be. Cause for revoking the conditional use permit.
Right.
So, but that's, that's something that we'll definitely need to keep an eye on.
Two hundred East is is a busy road with a bunch of large trucks hauling dirt. North and south all day long. So the traffic on that road is a concern, not just for the traffic, but also for their customers and and their clients. The parents and kids. Also, if if you're not aware, that there will eventually be a hundred and twenty-two new homes north of. In the ro- general proximity of the elementary school that's on Second East and that will also increase a lot amount of traffic, so. It's important that they have the opportunity to mitigate their parking situation. To be in compliance and also to be safe because of all the traffic that that will eventually be, um, on that road.
Thank you. So, um, I guess maybe on that point, we require them to prepare a traffic plan, are there specific requirements? With regard to what that plan must entail or, um, if it is approved or not? Does that make sense, the question I'm asking?
Yeah, so, and I don't know if there is, you know, as as Aspen brought up, all vehicular stops for dropping off or picking off, let's see. A traffic circulation and safety plan must be submitted, I don't know if there's necessarily an outline of exactly what.
What that is, yeah.
Uh, circulation and safety plan is, I think they've attempted to do that with with showing that they have, have, you know, the adequate width for. For some perpendicular parking, again, I don't know if perpendicular parking is the best solution there, if if they're, you know. With some of the things said with it being a busier road, maybe there's a parallel parking drop-off system that can be can be done, but. You know, like I say, on their application, I think, I think they meet the requirements, it's really gonna be, the challenge for them is gonna be being, being able to communicate with. With their clients and and getting it to to operate in a, in a, in appropriate manner so that it doesn't, you know. Uh, create a hazard that that would, you know, lead to a consideration of revoking the conditional use, so, uh.
And I'm trying to think in my head of how to wrap that up in a condition that could be attached to a motion, um. Could we say something like, um, you know, they work with staff to. Address the, I don't know how to say it, you know what I mean, to 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 develop a traffic circulation plan that would address the safety concerns that have been mentioned and.
Well, and for code, the.
I know.
The the responsibilities on the planning commission to do that, I don't think staff's necessarily the the ones who are gonna develop that plan with them. I, well, here's, here's maybe some suggestions, I think, that are are. I, well, here's here's maybe some suggestions, I think, that are 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 objective things that could be done. I think having some sort of a drop-off pickup person out there, um, which they've talked about doing, I think that's that's important. I think parallel versus perpendicular perpendicular, there's gonna be backing out, which I think can cause a a safety challenge and, you know, backing onto the road just complicates traffic and that. But it, parallel, I think, is a lot, a lot more seamless for that. I think those two things can certainly be done. Um, uh, yeah, those are the the two things that come to my mind. There's other things. Like I say, I think the planning commission certainly come up with things that I think are are low-hanging fruit, if you will, of of things that will help with that. Uh, you know, maybe require some sort of, you know, flyer or pamphlet that that they show us that they're giving to their parents, but it's ultimately gonna come down to to them and being able to to make sure that it's it's not impactful and it's it's able to to be an appropriate business. And so, I know that's a hard thing and it's 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 frustrating when parents don't listen, but, uh, that's kind of where we're at with this.
So, three A negates perpendicular parking, doesn't it?
Sorry, what's that?
Three A says all vehicular stops for dropping off or picking up children shall be done with the passenger side of the vehicle toward the residence. So if you have perpendicular parking out there, they can't do that.
Right. And that's why I say I think the parallel is is what needs to 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 be a specific condition for. Perpendicular parking, I don't think works with code and I don't think it's.
Required.
It's not the the what the code would allow for anyways.
Yeah, the the code would restrict the perpendicular parking. You say, no, you can't do that because you have to parallel to drop off or pick up.
Right. And again, it's not necessarily parking, it's dropping off, picking up and and so hopefully the the vehicles there just temporarily while they're doing that. But it it'll it'll definitely take some effort on their part to make this work, but, you know, I guess this is not necessarily, we're not trying to to look in a crystal ball that predict if it's gonna work or not. It's really they meet the criteria and it's up to them to to make sure that that it it'll it'll be run smoothly, so it's not a an issue.
The other thing is a forty-eight are only business-related stops. There could be resident resident-related stops as well. I don't know if you count on only business-related stops or not. Yeah, but it it's forty-eight business-related is is a requirement. There could be more than that, obviously, but it could be just residential visitors or whatever, so. There there is an impact there for sure.
In deliveries and.
Delivery, yeah, who knows what, who knows?
Would you state your name first?
Okay, thank you. I'm Jacqueline Stevens. Uh, Caleb is my husband. So one thing that was failed to be mentioned is that, um, I obviously haven't attended their business. I haven't been inside, but what I have observed living across the street is that they do have uh, up to twelve, maybe more vehicles parked in the mornings, uh, for multiple hours as well as throughout the day with kids getting in and out, people attending what it looks like fitness classes. Um, I looked into more detail online on their website and it does show that they run adult fitness classes throughout the morning, preschool-aged dance classes throughout the day, and then children classes throughout the evening. And the number of vehicles that I have counted just sitting at my house has exceeded well over sixty. Um, on Thursdays, that number jumps above eighty. Um, and what they propose on paper may get approved and perhaps the the correct step is to continue to observe, watch, and maybe ask for the city to, um, to follow up on it or to, how how does it get enforced that they are running an appropriate business for what our area is zoned for? Um, that really is a bummer that they weren't able to keep their lease in a lo- a commercial location where they could appropriate run their business. Um, but trying to do it in a residential area where there are neighborhood kids, where we're we're just in a a normal neighborhood, trying to run a full, successful business may not be the right area. Uh, we it may not be appropriately zoned for that. And that that's not to, uh, hurt their business in any way, but just to say that maybe the size of their business might need to, uh, be run somewhere else. But I guess for clarification, is it just if they can get it approved tonight, uh, what are the next steps if they're not following through on the conditioned, uh, the conditional permit?
And and, yeah, that that's always the challenge with code enforcement is is, uh, is gathering that information and and that evidence of things like that. But if there's things that are are not in in compliance with their conditional use permit, then then, yeah, we would just need to to be given that information and we can look into it further. But, uh, yeah, I don't think we're trying to to necessarily judge whether they're gonna do it or not.
Yeah.
It's, they they meet on paper and and it'll be up to them to to show that they can continue to to meet, uh, what they've indicated that they will do on paper.
Okay.
And if there's anything contrary to that, then then that could be something that would jeopardize their conditional use permit.
Yeah, thank you. And, yeah, no, we're fully in support of of the business. We just want it to be successful where it's appropriate. So, thank you.
Thanks.
I agree. I was just discussing with Commissioner Wade that the conditions that they need to meet are here. I don't feel like we need to apply any more additional conditions. Just, you know, it'll it'll just be up to them to follow the conditions that are already stated in the in the conditional use that's here, so.
As you were, yeah, talking about in particular with regard to, um, well, I mean, in regard to a number of, uh, stops and people in classes and, yeah, how drop off goes and so on, so.
Yeah, it's all defined.
Right.
It's defined. I don't I don't personally feel like we need to apply any additional conditions. Just be sure that, um, they're following the conditions that are currently currently there.
Yep, that's a good point. Okay. Any other discussion? Or are we ready to move forward on that basis? Alright, does anyone wanna make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for the proposed standout studios with the following conditions. All code requirements in Santaquin City Code ten dot forty dot zero six zero and ten dot forty dot zero four zero be met and a business license be obtained before operation.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Tolman. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Romero. Any further discussion?
Hey, Trevor, maybe this is a point, and I, just as I was hearing that, uh, so I think it's not just, uh, limited to ten forty oh six zero and ten forty oh four zero. I think ten forty oh five zero also applies, which is the the conditions of a minor home occupation. I think it's kind of a step up that they need to comply with with oh four zero, which is standards for all of home occupations, the standards for minor home occupations, and then that as well. So I know you specifically mentioned those two, but it might just be better that they conform to everything in ten forty.
I will amend my motion to, uh,
Ten dot forty, which is the entire chapter.
Ten dot forty.
Okay. So we have an amended motion? Are you willing to second the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. We got a second on the amendment as well? Alright, let's vote. Um, Commissioner Tolman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood? Yes. Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Okay. That conditional use, uh, permit with the stated conditions is approved and it is unanimous. Alright, thank you. Thanks to applicants and to everyone who commented. Alright. We did them all, right?
We have one more.
Do we have one more?
We have one more, don't we?
ADUs.
We have one more. I knew this was gonna be organizing him. I knew I was gonna get out of order. Alright. We need to go back to agenda item number two. Thanks for keeping me on task.
This'll be quick. Uh, like we've discussed with the moderate income housing strategies for twenty twenty-five, we propose that the planning commission and city council amend Santaquin City Code Title ten, Chapter sixteen, Section eight and Title ten, Chapter twenty, Section one hundred to permit detached accessory dwelling units in the R fifteen residential zone. This will satisfy Strategy one E, which states it'll create or allow for and reduce regulations related to internal or detached accessory dwelling units in residential zones. And then this action will meet our benchmark of uh, initiating the allowance of detached accessory dwelling units in the R fifteen before June first as of twenty twenty-five. Um, your responsibility is to hold a public hearing and forward a recommendation to the city council tonight.
Alright, very good. Um, this is not a surprise. We've had quite some discussions on this in the last few meetings, so, um, anything we need to discuss before we hold a public hearing? Alright, we do have to hold a public hearing, so let's do that now. I will open the public hearing at eight forty and invite any comment, if anyone would like to comment on this agenda item. Okay, then we will close the public hearing at eight forty. Alright. Anything to add on this one, commissioners?
I have a question for you, Jason. In the legislative session, they're looking at increasing the timeline for every year and every three years. You think that's gonna pass or not?
I don't know.
Hopefully?
I mean, I think we just kind of operate like nothing's gonna change or or you don't know what builds, but, yeah.
If that did happen, it wouldn't happen.
If it happens, if legis- new legislation happens, I mean, there's there's been some legislation that has been talked about, uh, that just ties cities' hands on detached accessory dwelling units citywide. So, I think we we do this and if that happens, then we do that and and it doesn't really work for, you know, at least in the future. I think doing this right now, hopefully, it'll
Put us in compliance for.
It'll put us in compliance or at least it'll, that strategy will help us with compliance. But, yeah, I I try not to operate too much on on the what is with the state legislation, but it's, you know, operate as if, you know.
I just wanted your opinion.
Yep. I don't know. It's it's hard to predict sometimes what's happening at the state.
Sometimes. Alright, we've got a recommended motion in front of us. Would anyone like to make that motion or another motion?
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of the proposed code amendment, which permits detached accessory dwelling units in within the R fifteen zone.
Okay, very good. We got a motion by Commissioner Tolman?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Romero. Um, anything else we need to talk about on that before we vote? Alright, let's vote. Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood? Yes. Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolman?
Yes.
Okay, that is forwarded with a positive recommendation and it is unanimous. Alright. Now, we can move on to our final agenda item, which is number five. We need to approve the minutes from our last meeting on January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Do we need to discuss anything with regard to those minutes before we approve those? Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to approve those minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Alright, we have a motion by Commissioner Wade. Do we have a second?
I'll second. Commissioner Wood?
Second by Commissioner Hoffman. All in favor? Yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Did you vote?
Said yes.
Okay, perfect. Those minutes are approved and it's unanimous. Alright, any other business we need to take care of? Okay, well, let's get out of here then. Anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn at eight forty-three.
So be it. We're adjourned at eight forty-three. Alright, thanks, everyone.